All right, everybody ready? All right, here we go. Welcome, everybody. This is a special meeting workshop. This is workshop, special meeting to follow of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. It's Thursday, July 17, 2025. It is 4:31 PM. This specific workshop is for the interviews of our two applicants for the county attorney position. So if everybody could please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we take a brief moment of silence. We use this time to honor our men and women in the military and our first responders. This is just a brief moment for each individual for their prayer or reflection. Again, welcome, everybody. We will have two rounds today of questions and answers with our county attorney applicants. Following, we're going to set a maximum of 45 minutes for each of the candidates. It puts us a little bit past what we advertised for the meet and greet. We said 5:30, but if we fill out the maximum time limits, that'll push us closer to 6:00. Does anybody have any problem with that? Okay. With that, we will go ahead and start the question and answer period. Our first applicant is Mr. Michael Rodriguez. So Mr. Rodriguez is with us. How are you, sir?
Right here.
Yes, sir, right there, in the hot seat.
Okay.
I just want to take an opportunity to thank you for the time commitment today, going through the one-on-one interviews with our commissioners. It's been a long day, so we thank you again for the commitment, for your interest in Flagler County, and I just want to welcome you here to Flagler County.
Well, the pleasure was all mine to be here today. I really was looking forward to this day and meeting with all of you here today.
Awesome. All right, so we'll have two questions. If we can get through the two questions from each commissioner, they're done by district. I start off as the District One Commissioner, and this is kind of a repeat question from earlier, but since now we have an audience, if you will, on recording, we just would like, if you could, tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in this opportunity, what brought Flagler to your attention and why you think this is a good fit for you.
Okay. I have been working in local government law in the state of Florida for the last 28 years. I started in county government. I'm a former Assistant County Attorney for Martin County. I am also a former Assistant County Attorney for your neighbor to the south, Volusia County. In addition to county work, I have also done municipal work, serving while in private practice, I worked at a firm where we represented both the city of Apalaka in Miami-Dade County, as well as the town of Miami Lakes and the village of El Portal. In my role, I've also been the City Attorney for the city of Apopka in Orange County, and I currently am the Chief Deputy City Attorney, which is the second-in-command of the City Attorney's Office for the city of Palm Bay in Brevard County, Florida. My specialty in local government law has been in the field of land use and development work, as well as environmental law. But having practiced so long, I have a varied, very legal practice. I have practiced, sorry, litigation, both in the public and private sector. One of the advantages of also working in the private sector is that I have represented individuals and corporate entities before governing bodies in central and South Florida. So I have been on both sides of the table when it comes to local government law, and it's that varied experience and that perspective that I bring which assists me in having that opportunity to work with folks who come forth to the county for business, and it's one of the advantages. I had actually one of our counsel in Volusia said, "Michael, you are actually a pleasure to work with because you have actually sat in my shoes." And it's always a pleasure to work with an attorney who is not blinded by, that is not subject to bureaucratic blinders, but that understands, understands where I'm coming from, but at the same time, he understands where I'm coming from, that I'm seeking the best for the public, and that it's going to always make it so that we can achieve a middle ground that's going to best work for both parties. So I look forward to bringing that experience and bringing that opportunity to Flagler County. I want to return to county work. It's where I started, and it's what I look forward to bringing. And when the opportunity raised itself here in Flagler County, one was the opportunity to come back and be closer to home and work closer to home and bring my experience and bring my knowledge to Flagler County, I think is a great benefit to myself, and I hope to bring that to this governing body and to residents and the public of the county.
Great, thank you. Question number two is, it says, "Share with us your experience in making legal recommendations to an elected body." So as part of that, do you weigh in your litigation chances? Do you, is there unique or circumstances or recommendations from your past that you would bring forth in explaining the problem solving to the commissioners in that instance?
All right. First and foremost, as your legal counsel, and I really stress this to each and every one of you, and it's not just you, I stress this to every single body that I have ever represented, both at the county and at the city level. As your legal counsel, as either a county attorney or a city attorney, I am not the Sixth's Commissioner, I am not the Sixth's Councilmember. The people of this county did not vote for me to implement or execute any policy. I am your legal advisor. I am here to advise you on the law, and advise you on what your legal guardrails are and what those decisions that you are going to undertake and what is that that you have to review under the guardrails that the law provides. So I expect each and every one of you to seek my legal guidance, and it is my duty and my obligation to provide you that guidance, to assist you in getting to that point where you want to, under what the law permits. And then, once I've given you that guidance, what that decision is, that is for you amongst yourselves to deliberate. And that's the important division and dividing line, and I'm very serious and very adamant about a fine division line between the legal realm and the political realm. I do not get involved in the political realm. The office of the county attorney is to be independent of all political decisions because I simply serve as your legal advisor. Your deliberations, that's your political realm, that is for you to decide. When it comes to giving such legal counsel, yes, I'm going to rely on my experiences, especially a varied experience of representing multiple cities. There are things that I have already encountered, that I've already experienced. I sometimes like to joke with some of my governing bodies. I'm originally from South Florida. There is nothing you can say or do that I haven't already seen that's going to freak me out, that I haven't, that I've already experienced or seen. So that years of experience is going to, I'm going to bring that forth in advising you and assisting you in achieving the goals that you're seeking. So that wealth of knowledge and experience is something that I want to bring to you, and it's going to be involved in my guidance, in my legal guidance and advice and advisement to you as a governing body, but I'm going to stay within that legal realm. If you come to me for legal advice and legal counsel, I will provide it, but I will also be forthwith and forthcoming to you if the questions start to delve into an area where you're asking about, "Well, what could be the political repercussions of my decision?" Well, that's where I'm going to have to stop you. And I say, "Well, that's not what you pay me to do." That's where I do not have an obligation to do because that's the political realm, that's in your area, that's not for my area because I am adamant about keeping my opinions and my office politically independent from your decisions going forth. So that's something that I hold dearly. I will die on that hill, and I have done that before in other jurisdictions where I have said, "I'm adamant about keeping the office, the legal counsel, independent of any political squabbles between governing elected officials."
As a follow-up, you mentioned it, right? So regardless of you try to keep the politics separate, the politics finds you. So did you want to say anything in regards to your resignation time at Apopka and how the politics found you there?
Unfortunately, it was a tenuous political situation, and because of what the situation that I found myself in, and it turned into a legal squabble between two council members. It was really specific to Apopka because of their former governance, but Apopka is a strong mayor, former government, and the way the charter was written, the council has the authority to terminate their charter officers, and the only two charter officers in Apopka are the city clerk and the city attorney. And the language of the charter stated that the removal of those officers can only be by vote, a majority vote of the commissioners and mayor. A vote was had, and all of this stemmed from an unfortunate situation involving the death of a firefighter in the line of duty, which unfortunately became politicized. And when a vote was cast, the mayor voted in the negative, refusing to go along, and then it became basically a municipal constitutional crisis. We had one commissioner that was adamant, wanted to threaten litigation, and it was at that point where it was more expedient for me to attend to my resignation than to drag the city into a constitutional crisis, one that I was confident that the language in the charter was going to prevail. We actually had multiple attorneys concur with our opinion that, yes, it required the assent of the mayor to terminate a constitutional officer, I'm sorry, a charter officer. The city is now currently undertaking a charter amendment to try to change that language due to that situation, but that's unfortunately the typical political squabbles that are seen in local government in the state of Florida and seeing from the local media. It's not, those aren't things that are not even alien to this area as well.
Well, thank you. I mean, unfortunately, now with, again, with social media and everything, it never goes away, it's always there, so thank you for addressing it.
Not a problem.
So we'll move to District Two.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah. Mike, can you give us an example of when you saw a problem in the organization you were in and what steps you took to fix it?
By organization, you mean the actual city or within my department?
One of your jobs.
No problem. So I think it's important when advising, in my role as legal counsel, and I cannot take an affirmative administrative role in making orders or implementing policy, so I can only advise. So I think if there's certain issues where I see certain inefficiencies in issues regarding, let's say, development review, where I might state, "Hey, this might work more efficiently if we take this route," I can provide such advice. However, I cannot implement such a policy, that would have to take that up the administrative chain to then state, then to, for it to be the responsibility of that department to whether to implement those issues or not. So I'm very cognizant of the limits of my authority. I do not want to overstep the bounds of the administrative wing of my local government, whether it be the city or a county, but I think I do take serious what abilities I have to provide advise, advisement to department head that perhaps we can tweak the language of something, or maybe conduct a review in a certain way, where we might have certain efficiencies and advise them as such, and then let them implement that policy or go forth with that policy. However, if they elect not to do so, you know, all I can say is, well, they proceed to go forward, you know, against the advice of counsel.
Thank you. My next question, you've already answered, so I'm going to ad lib here. On the subject of kind of politics and how things work in Florida, occasionally, you might be called upon to go to Tallahassee to testify, and do you consider that within the realm of your duties, and if so, do you have any problem with that?
I do not, I do not have a problem. I wanted to make sure I got my negatives correct. I do not have a problem with that. I do believe that does fall under my obligations and duties to zealously advocate for my client, and my client being the Board of County Commissioners as well as Flagler County. And if it is something that is of importance to this county, and as we discussed, I think, I am a strong believer and a strong advocate of local rule, and I have spoken in the past, especially both at my, currently now in my position as Chief Deputy City Attorney in Palm Bay, as well as in the past in Volusia County and in Apopka, of the current erosion of local rule cast by the Florida Legislature. I think it is proper for, if called upon by you as a board to accompany you or to help represent the county in Tallahassee to discuss or speak up on the issue of the county's role or the county's ability or right to rule itself, then I believe it is proper for this office to represent the county in that aspect.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Carney, District Three.
Thank you, Mike. Could you describe your experience working on mediated settlement agreements, including community groups and constituents, to resolve matters and avoid litigation?
The most recent and best example, especially in an intergovernmental focus I can give, was litigation that I was involved in, and this was, it's a local matter, actually. This was litigation between Volusia County and the city of Daytona Beach Shores. This was a case where the nexus of the litigation actually began before I joined the county attorney's office, but as you're aware, Volusia County allows for beach driving, and one of the side benefits of beach driving is that the beach serves as the parking lot for the residents of the county when they go visit the beach. So in anticipation of a potential rescission of the federal permits which permit for beach driving, the county has prepared a contingency in trying to acquire properties upland to serve as county parks and to be parking lots to service the public. So the county purchased two abandoned hotels during the real estate crash, which the county then proceeded to demolish and then tried to develop them as parks, as county parks within the city of Daytona Beach Shores. We proceeded to move forward, move ahead to the city to receive our development approvals, try to go under the permitting process of the city. The city refused to grant us any permits, stating that, "While our parks were inconsistent with their comprehensive plan," even though, under their comprehensive plan, institutional uses were actually permitted in every single land use in their city. That denial resulted in this county suing the city, stating that, you know, "We had the right, under the comprehensive plan, to develop those parcels as public parks." The case was immediately taken, was diverted under the state's intergovernmental alternative dispute resolution procedures. We then proceeded forward to mediation between the two parties. We actually had a joint, a joint public meeting between the town council and the county council of both, and ended up achieving a mediated settlement between the county and the city in which the parks were to go forward, the city was going to have some review of the development, and the county was going to have some approval process in how it's processed, in how the construction was going to be done. At the end of the day, we actually avoided litigation. Also, most importantly, the entire matter was handled completely in-house at the county level to even minimize additional costs at the park. And I was actually the lead counsel in that with my counterpart from the city of Daytona Beach Shores, who actually became a very good colleague of mine and is someone who's given a lot of recommendations on my behalf throughout central Florida. I really cherish working with him and have gotten a lot of great knowledge and support from him since that case. That's probably the most recent case, especially in a governmental context of where we ended up with a mediated settlement where we avoided litigation, because it was actually two lawsuits which were going to be consolidated, because we had two separate, we had the appeal of the denial of our comprehensive plan amendment, and then we had a subsequent other additional lawsuit. So there were two lawsuits, so we ended up really settling two lawsuits without any further additional litigation and cost to the taxpayers of both cities.
That's a great question, because it harkens back to our Ormond Beach, same situation exactly as you described it.
Right. Ormond Beach.
And this one is a little bit, it just uses the word controversial, so tell us about a time when you have experienced litigating a controversial issue on behalf of the board. What was the outcome, and what did you learn from it, and what would you do differently?
The adjective controversial is where I'm having problems. Some of the litigation I have wasn't necessarily controversial, it was just kind of the mundane governmental.
You can go there.
I'm trying to think. I mean, I mean, in my time as a young attorney in Martin County, I mean, we did have litigation. I was, had to defend certain First Amendment cases regarding our regulation of our adult entertainment ordinance, especially, we had one, we had one establishment that the occupational license was actually erroneously issued prior to it being opened, and our technicians actually mismeasured the distance of the adult bookstore from a gymnastics facility because they initially did not realize that the gymnastics facility fell under the definition of a school or an educational facility. When they discovered that, they pulled the approvals, and then the location ended up suing Martin County, so we proceeded forward to litigation in that matter. They had not opened yet. Kind of a humorous aside, I'll never forget, I had one commissioner call my office, and she's like, "Michael, could you please go down to the bookstore and see if they've opened? Could you go, just try to open the door?" I'm like, "Really?" And I was just a 20-something-year-old attorney going, "If you say so." Luckily, it had not opened yet. So that was a controversial issue. We tried to achieve some type of a settlement, and it was a difficult case because of the, you know, we were down to the, really arguing what the definitions are. We had, we had probably, in an area where we had really controversial litigation cases really arise from my time in Martin County, where we had either development permits that were revoked, that were issued by one board, and then after the election, new board members came, they then revisited the issue and revoked a development permit that was granted by their previous board. And the second that was revoked, here came the litigation, and we were defending Section 1983 Civil Rights, Property Rights actions, especially one where the previous board accepted our growth, not our growth management director, but one of our directors who stated that rock crushing was actually in agricultural use. And then we tried to have to defend that, so that was an issue. So that was probably the closest when it comes to controversial issues where we had to work on cases, and I had one of the attorneys working on those matters. You're welcome.
All right. Commissioner Pennington is our District Four representative.
Yes. Describe your experience, including drafting development agreements, interlocal agreements, working on comprehensive plan issues, environmental issues, and any related ordinances. It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Explain it all.
Where do I start? I can tell you, if I am, and if I'm chosen to be your county attorney, I will be bringing my library of forms and templates, because I am currently, right now, in the process of probably drafting and in the review, and I think I had to skip out on a conference call today on a development agreement. We've been battling with a developer in Palm Bay for the last four months, going back and forth on a major product, project, I'm sorry. One of the major documents I've actually been working on, and I proposed this document, and the developers, one of them said, "This is something that we've never contemplated, something we brought up in Apopka, actually. We have a major area in Palm Bay that's completely undeveloped, and right now, in the pipeline, there are four major residential developments that are in the pipeline to be built there. There is no infrastructure in that area right now. So the one major county road has to be extended to get to there, and then the infrastructure, water and sewer will follow, then the rest of the development." So I proposed the draft, getting all the developers to sit down in a room, and we're going to draft a pioneering agreement in which all the developers, we're going to establish a timeline for everybody's responsibility for the construction and funding of the major infrastructure, for infrastructure, for everybody's proportionate share of their contribution to the infrastructure, and then their schedule from when they were going to provide their share. So that was the first step. In addition to each one of those developments, bringing in their own development agreement for their responsibilities for infrastructure, for all the approvals. So, I mean, on average, there are probably, just today, I probably have close to 10 development agreements right now pending that I've been reviewing and drafting in Palm Bay. There's probably another 10 proportionate fair share and impact fee contribution agreements. I have drafted, so, I mean, it's numerous. I mean, I have very, I have a lot of experience drafting comprehensive plan amendments. Actually, I have experience not just drafting them as well, but also challenging them when I was in private practice, defending them when I've been representing local governments, rezonings, both drafting the ordinances for those. So that's, there's, there's a lot. My current role as the chief deputy city attorney for the City of Palm Bay, their growth management department is my responsibility. The way that our responsibilities are divvied up, each attorney in our office, and we have four, is responsible for providing counsel for certain departments, and my departments are growth management, building, utilities, and public works. So I am their attorney. So any advisement I give them, then I report that to the city attorney. She does not deal with them on an individual basis, it's, I'm their city attorney, basically. So I'm in constant communications with our growth management director, sitting down with them, talking with them. Actually, we're currently dealing with a, this is unique, so we're currently dealing with a project that got approval under Live Local to be a mixed use. The city just recently voted by resolution to opt out of the tax credits. Well, they started construction, and they were relying on building based on the city having the tax credits, and now that the city opted out, well, they are realizing, "Oh, we can't make any money now." So they want to either have rezoning, except that the City of Palm Bay, which has a population larger than Flagler County, but only, I think it's 2% of the land within the city is commercial. Almost 97% of the land use in the city is residential. So the city's giving up commercial land use for a residential use, and we, as a city, I'm like, "Wait a minute." So we have to find some middle ground here to stick to our position of, well, there's a mixed use here. We've given you this commercial property to provide residential, but now you want to not be subject to the declaration that we've drafted, and I've drafted multiple now land use restrictive agreements pursuant to Live Local. They want out of it, because the tax credits don't, don't deal anymore. So I've done with, I've dealt with multiple Live Local projects, we've had a whole bunch try to come in to use whatever little amount of commercial land we still have left in Palm Bay. So that's one of the many plethora of these types of documents. And I like to, I mean, she's now retired, but I'd like to give a shout-out to our former deputy county attorney in Volusia, Jamie Seaman. She was a masterful teacher in teaching me the ins and outs of development agreements and impact fee. She was probably one of the state experts when it came to impact fee, and I was an eager student under her tutelage, and I'll definitely bring that knowledge to this county.
Right. And my last question, describe your experience working on statewide legal issues related to counties, such as preemption home rule and taxation.
Well, as much as I'm allowed to speak on the issue of preemption before, you know, without incurring the wrath of the state legislature, I mean, I've tried to at least bring that knowledge. I like to update the, my local governing bodies every year on how far the legislature is going that year to take away most of our home rule. Unfortunately, the way a lot of this legislation is being drafted, I mean, local governments really have their hands tied. There really isn't much wiggle room that we have. I mean, I have followed what the legislature has attempted. I know there was a bill that was, I want to say, two years ago, that one of the proposals was, if there's any preemption bill that's to be presented by the legislature would require a two-thirds affirmative vote to pass. Unfortunately, that bill never even made it out of committee. The sponsor was actually a good friend of mine, he was someone I worked under in Miami-Dade County. So, but I try to bring those issues to the forefront to my local government. I do this every, when I was in Apopka, I did this every year. Round June, I would always come up with a summary report of all the bills that were passing in the legislature and how they would affect local governments. I got this from, we did this in Volusia. Our county attorney, Dan Eckert, always assigned each one of us based on our area of concentration, the areas of those bills as they were adopted, to update the, update our board, our county commission on these new changes and how it would affect, and then how we could then adapt to the, that new, that new regime coming down from Calhassie, unfortunately.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, District Five.
Five is still alive. Here we go. My question is, describe your experience litigating jury trials, bench trials, and DOAH proceedings.
In my 28 years, I've actually only had to try one jury trial, and it was in private practice, and it was a, it was actually a, it, on the periphery involved local government matters, I was actually representing a, an engineer in a professional malpractice case, and it involved a developer in an annexed property where he got delayed by the city. And it was, unfortunately, I did not get the verdict that I wished. That's actually been the only jury trial. Now, DOA hearings, I've had several, as early as I represented the Martin County Building Department in front of DOA as a young attorney. I've also, and my last action as a private, as a attorney in the private sector, was a land use challenge to the City of Hialeah, in which we were challenging a land use amendment where a parcel of land, as I explained, this, this actually was one of the few times, it was personal for me. The parcel of land was in my grandmother's old neighborhood. This was a multi-acre parcel which used to be owned by DuPont, where they used to test paints. So it was the last large, single acreage in the city, surrounded by single family. Developer came and purchased it. It had been the same industrial use since 1920, before the City of Hialeah was actually incorporated in 1925. They sought high residential, high intensity residential to build an apartment complex. The property was surrounded by a low-density residential and was not on an arterial road. You actually had to go through the neighborhood to get to it. We argued in front of the city council. Actually, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended denial of the land use amendment. City council approved at two public hearings. We challenged, we had an action in front of DOA. We had a three-day administrative hearing, intense administrative hearing. We did not prevail, because the standard for residents to challenge land use amendments is quite high, so we did not prevail. But we did get some good concessions. The administrative law judge in their findings of fact did, did find some improprieties on the part of the city, especially when it looked like they were cooking some of their, some of their numbers. But that was one of the DOA actions. I mean, I've had multiple DOA actions and challenges, personnel matters, both at the, at the county and at the city. So I have been in front of the division administrative hearings. I have filed both cases in both state and federal courts. I am admitted to practice law in the middle district of Florida, as well as the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals. If I am fortunate enough that one of your cases makes it up to the U.S. Supreme Court, I will seek to receive admittance to be admitted in the U.S. Supreme Court. But I am admitted, I'm also admitted in the Southern District of Florida, but I don't think we'll have to deal with them, with them. So, but I have, I have argued in cases in both, both state and federal courts. I've had, I had defended a major ADA lawsuit against Martin County in federal court, which we then resolved by mediation, and then represented private owner, private business owners who were sued under the ADA in federal court, also achieving, basically mediated settlements, as well as achieving an outcome where the judge actually scolded the plaintiff and stripped them of half their attorney's fees because of their conduct against my client, which was a very satisfactory result because of their, their actions in the case. We was, had a very thorough research to try to argue that, look, they were, they were just being completely unreasonable in the case. So I feel like I have a varied, both state and federal litigation experience that I can bring to the county, to then examine if it's something that, you know, we can, we can have litigation be in-house to try to, you know, go case, on a case-by-case basis to see if it's something that we can keep in-house to save the taxpayers some money and use the expertise that we have in-house.
Thank you. My final question is, have you created special assessments for a local government? Explain the challenges you encountered working with local government and how you dealt with the constituency affected by the proposed special assessment.
At the city level, we did create certain special assessments. Usually, it has been to create what we in Apopka would call like special lighting districts, which we would have certain assessments to allow for lighting in a neighborhood. There is a certain municipal process to go forward. There would be a resolution, you know, provided certain, there's a statutory framework that we followed. Most times, there was no controversy. The matter just, it goes on to their tax bill. So we had a program that we did develop in Apopka as these new developments came in for street lighting, and we believe it was very successful, and I think it was very popular. We did not, we really did not receive any complaints over that matter. I know that we were beginning to try to, where I was working with one of property owners' attorney for finding ways to try to use the special assessment system to extend infrastructure to a portion of an infamous portion of Palm Bay, which is known as the compound. I don't know how familiar you are with the nature of Palm Bay. Palm Bay was developed by the General Development Corporation, which meant they just platted hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of lots and then left. So the compound is an area in the western part of the, at the edge of the city. I almost always want to say it's the Everglades, but I keep forgetting that I'm in central Florida. But these are lots that were sold to property owners up north. Many of them, these original owners have passed, their heirs owned the lots, and I don't think many of them even know they still own the lots. So you have a patchwork of privately-owned lots that are abandoned. There's no infrastructure except for the roads. Roads are falling apart because the city can't, doesn't maintain them. So it's basically become an area of lawlessness out there. The city can't do anything, because most of the lots are privately owned, so it's this patchwork of lots, cannot do anything, can't regulate them. There is a property owner who's tried to assemble, make an assemblage of lots, and is looking at ways and perhaps create a special assessment to help, so he can try to develop these lots and bring out infrastructure. So I have been working with council to see, is there a way we at the city can come up with a mechanism to create a special assessment program to extend infrastructure out to there. But got to be careful when it comes to special assessments, to make sure that, you know, we meet the legal requirements, that we're not, you know, creating too much of a special benefit, or we're not, you know, unduly burdening the property owners and want to be, stay consistent with the requirements of state law.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I've got one follow-up for you, since we have a few minutes, just a few minutes left, and this goes back to how social media just continues to follow you, not just you, anybody, right? Nothing ever goes away, it's always picked up somehow, somewhere. And in your, what seems to have followed you in recent articles about Titusville and getting that was a perception that you have not been friendly to the, to the public, to the general public. So I want to give you the opportunity to talk briefly about public interaction and participation and the public's role in government, if you would, just to alleviate any of those things, so that the public knows if you're coming here, who they're going to be dealing with, and how you, how you treat and respect the public.
Sure. I think it's, it's such a subject, because the legal department serves as legal counsel to this board. So I think it's important to stress that the county attorney's office does not, is not the legal representative of the public. We're not the people's attorney, we are the attorneys for the Board of County Commissioners. But with that, though, should an issue arise, or if a member of the public has it, wants some clarification, I am happy to sit down, to listen, and discuss, try to best explain the matter, try to avoid as best that I can. Sometimes I know I get myself wrapped up in legalese, and because it's the language we're used to speaking, as our professional language. But I try to remind myself, for years in private practice, I represented homeowners associations, and one of the partners of the firm I worked at said, "Hey, Michael, remember, when dealing with our clients, these are, you know, homeowners, they don't understand. Just pretend that they're all a bunch of eighth graders. That's the best way you can translate your professional knowledge to the context to relate to what they understand." I have spoken with members of the public. I think there's some folks who, you know, if we have a respectful communication, they're seeking knowledge and clarification. Doesn't necessarily mean we have to come to agreement. I'm not going to try to convince them or try to change their mind sometimes. I think my job, if I can provide some clarification, to bring forth what the county's position is. We can come to, we can end in a disagreement, that's not a problem. I will not take that, take offense to that. So, I mean, I've, full disclosure, I had a constituent call me yesterday about my candidacy. I spoke with her. I think, I believe we had a very cordial conversation. I hope that she believes that, too. Turned out, we were both from the same hometown. I thought she found that endearing. I listened, I heard her out, and I believe we hung up on very good terms. And I believe to carry that forward, I also believe, I'm not too proud to say that I've made mistakes in the past, and I'm willing to own up to those mistakes, but I'm also willing to learn from those mistakes. And I've had that opportunity to really improve, had that opportunity, had that chance last years working for Palm Bay, and I definitely will bring that to the county, and bring that service, bring that, those abilities, my experience to the county. You know, it's, we all grow. We all grow, we all learn from our mistakes, and we all grow. Most important thing in my experience is that definitely I do not follow any local government and social media sites anymore. It's just, it's just, I think it's important for, especially as legal counsel, to focus on the issues in front, not to have anything cloud my judgment, cloud any perception that might be out there, to really focus all of what my attention is on your needs, your concerns, your questions, so that my legal judgment and my legal reasoning is clear, concise, and to the best of my judgment for your abilities, for your service, because I am here in service to you as your legal advisor. I am not here to be the sixth commissioner. I'm not here to participate in politics, because those folks didn't vote for me. They're not going to vote for me, and I'm not here to implement or carry any policy. I'm here to provide legal advice and solely that. So that is my role, and never will I step into that role. Never, I never have, nor shall, nor will I ever will.
Well, thank you, sir. We have hit our time limit, but, one again, thank you for the day that you've given us to allow for the one-on-ones and for this public participation. We're not done yet, we have a meet and greet to follow, but at this portion, we're done. So thank you very much for your time.
As I said, you're very welcome. I looked forward to being here today, and it's been, it's been a pleasure to be here, and I, and I hope to keep coming here and serve as your county attorney. If given the chance, I look forward to the challenge, and I look forward to meeting and exceeding all of your expectations for you, for what you accept from a county attorney.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, one-minute break. We will reconvene our interview process. And with us, we have Marcia Siegel. George, thank you again for spending the day with us. Exhausting one-on-one interviews.
My pleasure.
We now switch to the public participation segment. We'll have about 45 minutes for questions from the commission. We'll retreat to a brief meet and greet in the back before the board will reconvene in a special meeting. But, we've got two questions from each of the commissioners. So, without further ado, we'll go ahead and get started. My first question is a little bit of repetitive. We talked about this in our one-on-one, but now that we have a wider audience, please just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay.
And, and why Flagler? What was your interest in Flagler County's opening?
All right. I just want to start off by saying I've had a wonderful day today. You all have been very kind to me, and your staff has been incredible in helping me. It's a long day to get through, and so I want to thank everybody for the experience. I've been in government, in local government, for more than 45 years. I've been a deputy. I've been a county manager and a county attorney. I've been a county, and I've been a county manager and a city manager. So, in those 45 years, I've handled all of those positions. And I have dealt with everything from starting a brand-new city with one piece of paper and trying to put a city together, to dealing with some very difficult legislation and very difficult land use issues. I am, I think I'm an all-purpose government lawyer, but my area of specialty is land use. And I've handled a lot of land use cases over the years. And I think that, and why Flagler County? So, let me just kind of move into that. I was burning out where I was, and I wasn't feeling too great. So, I resigned from my position in Deltona as a city man, as a city attorney, and tried to go to the doctors and figure out what was going on with me. And I basically started getting healthy with no stress for a while, not having to react to public comments and things like that, and editorial comments on how I was doing my job. And I was not working and got to be there when my daughter delivered my third grandson, which was a wonderful experience, just he's two months old. And he weighs 17 pounds. So, he's a big boy. So, anyway, so that's been a good experience. When I was working so many hours, I wouldn't have had that time. So, I have had the time to kind of reassess what I want to do with the rest of my life. And I felt like my brain was starting to turn to mush, and I missed the challenge. I missed the work. I missed being able to help. And I have a very strong sense of wanting to help in the governmental area, because I have all of this experience. And I want to help the board, and I want to help the residents, to try and do the best that you all could do for them, and to try and help facilitate that. Since I've been on both sides, both the administrator and the attorney, I do know both sides, but I also know how to stay in my own lane. So, I'm not looking at, I didn't, so I looked at, I looked online at Flagler County. I'm familiar with a lot of the counties in Florida. I looked at your wonderful coast and beach, which, being in Florida for as long as I've been, I dearly love. I also looked at some things that were important to me, your attempt to protect property, your attempt to try and preserve what has been important to Flagler County for a very long time. I looked at some of the grants you had applied for, and you did pretty well with the state. I, I'm a big fan of historic preservation. I like the fact that you had that diversity of the beach and the coastline, and then you have ag and, you know, a rural land situation. And so, there's a lot of diversity and opportunity. I'm very good with grants. I think I've handled just about everything. I looked at, I didn't have an opportunity to talk with your county manager, which I would very much like to do. If, if I was selected, I would work very collaboratively with that position. I'm not trying to be both. I just carry that experience and can also perhaps have a perspective at times, because I've had held that position also. So, so while, I was looking for an opportunity to go back to work. And so, I put my resume on Indeed. I saw a number of government jobs, but the only one I applied for was Flagler County. I want a collaborative, civil environment to work in. I feel like what I saw of what you all have been able to accomplish, I saw that, and I liked the priorities that I was seeing in what you all are working on. Florida's got a tough time ahead with regard to land use, with regard to development, with regard to what's going on with hurricanes, with regard to what may or may not happen with FEMA. There are so many issues and questions that are going to have to be resolved for the future. And it's something I'm excited about, something I would like to help and participate in. So, my husband told me not to apply. We've been married for 47 years, so of course, I don't listen to him. But, anyway, I applied. And he said, "Are you sure you want to go in, back into that environment?" And I said, "Yes, I do, because I think that there are challenges there that I would like to help with and handle." And that's why I applied. And coming here this morning, I have been treated so kindly. And, and I saw a very kind staff, people working to try and move forward, people working to just, I'm a stranger, to be kind to me, to try and help me. And I felt that from all of you, as I talked to every one of you. I felt that way. And so, that has encouraged me. This was a test for me to see, do I really want to come back? And do I have the stamina to make through the day use schedules today, which I'm still not sure about? But, so, I felt like I had a test I had to pass for myself, as I was trying to consider whether I wanted to go back and work again. I feel like I passed my test, and I have made it, and I'm sitting here right now, even though I'm kind of tired, but I have made it. And, and it was a good test for me, because I still am committed to doing the same kind of work that I've been doing. I think that I have so much experience in Florida, so much experience with Tallahassee, with counties, with cities, all of those kinds of things that I can bring to the table to try and help. I'm very organized. I'm very detail-oriented, and I'm nice. I believe in treating people well. I want to have collegial relationships. I want to try and answer questions. I want to help collaborate with the county manager and the other counties. I mean, I'm sorry, the other departments. I mean, I would go, and I have a story, when I just told Deltona that I was resigning, they had a recruitment for my position. And they had, at least two of the lawyers that had applied were telling the staff that they would never talk to them, that they would only talk to this city manager and only talk to the board. And they were telling me, "Why?" And I said, "I'm leaving." So, I don't have an answer for you, but that's not how I do business. I would talk to every department. I would talk to staff members. I would talk to every commissioner. And I do not, and I respect confidentiality and the rules of law that we're all governed by. But, I believe that my job, part of my job is to try and help all of you do what you collectively believe you want to get done. And I am thrilled by it and enjoy the idea of thinking about it, which is the test I had to get through today to see if I wanted to come back.
Thank you.
And I do. So, it was a good experience for me. I think you have a lot of challenges, but I think that you have a lot of opportunities. And I think that, of meeting with all of you and talking to all of you, I see the possibility for you all to work collaboratively on your issues that you have. And I do think those, and I would, one of the first things I would do is look at your comprehensive plan, look at your, the planning that you've done, the visioning, all of those things, to make sure that all of the key issues are being dealt with. I have particular areas where I would like to work on claims and finding cause. I am, I am a conservative, fiscally conservative in my approach to government. And I believe it is very important to look where we can save money, so that we can use it on issues that are of importance to the board and the people of Flagler County. And I think you all deserve nothing less than that. So, that's kind of why I'm here.
Thank you very much. Had to chuckle when we did our interview, and you mentioned that you saw the advertisement in Indeed.com, so.
Yes. Yes, I did.
That was great. And then, the second question, if you could share with us your experience in, in making legal recommendations to an elected body. So, do you weigh litigation chances? Do you explain your problem-solving routine in the process of that? Just talk a little bit about that.
Sure, sure. Of course, the process, the starting process is to get to know each of you and for you to get to know me. And there's no better way than to take specific issues and work through them together. And so, I view my availability to all of you at whenever you need me. And I would always make myself available to discuss with you whatever your issues are and any way I can help. I also will work collaboratively with the county manager on that, because again, I want to work together, not like one of us is trying to, you know, not work together. So, so I would do all of those things. And I would also, I respect the rules that we are governed by, and I hold confidentiality very dear. For me, there are no exceptions. As any of you speak to me, it doesn't go beyond that. And I don't share those kinds of conversations with anybody. I may take your issues and go on a search mission in the organization, trying to get data and information and whatever. I think that I heard from some of you that sometimes you raise questions in meetings and then feel like they're not, you're not getting responses. That's something I would talk with the county manager again, because again, I would like to do it collaboratively. But, to me, I've done this before. All the questions that you ask in a meeting become like an errata sheet and are listed, and then hopefully, we get an answer back on every single one of them before your next meeting. That's how I've always handled it in the past. You all have a right to get your questions answered. And then you can always come back to me or the county manager if you want more information or feel that we need to expand whatever I've offered. So, I feel very strongly about all of those things in working with the board. To me, my job is to help you get done what you're trying to get done and serve the people of Flagler County. And to me, again, like I think I said before, it's no less than what they deserve.
Thank you.
Sure.
Our next commissioner is Commissioner Hanson from District Two.
Hi.
Could you describe for us a time when you found a problem in your city or county and the steps you took to fix it?
Okay. Well, I just talked about the errata sheet, and that is something I have done. And, but other than that, usually, the problems that I deal with, and again, by talking to all the departments, I get in information and stuff. We had a real problem with how we were handling claims against the city. And we had had an HR director that was basically stuffing the claims in a credenza. And nothing was happening, and they weren't being handled. And basically, she brought a big box of claims to me into my office. And we then started working collaboratively on how do we deal with them, and trying to understand that when the city was paying X amount of dollars for that insurance, what, what were the expectations from the lawyers that were handling those claims for the insurance? And was there, and then I immediately, because I always go there, is, is there, is a way to save money on that process? Are we getting our money's worth for what we're paying? And what we found is, we had a number of scams going on. People in a neighborhood would determine, somebody would tell them you can get money from the city. And we had a, they found a sidewalk that had like a crack there, and like 10 different people in the neighborhood happened to walk by that crack and follow, you know? And so, it was just, you know, some kind of a miracle. But, anyway, but nobody had known those things. So, then we started, we talked to the attorney for the insurance carrier. We're talking to the attorney representing all those people that fell. And basically, what happened, it became a non-issue, and it didn't cost us anything. Now, that was a lot of savings. There were like seven claims. And so, then we started going through more and more and trying to understand how the city could save money in their insurance and their claims. The upshot of that was, through that process, we saved about $700,000 just in that year in money we saved, that then the board could use to spend on other projects. From there, we decided to bid out our insurance. And, and we both, I worked with the HR director, we decided we needed an expert in the insurance area to look at how we would put a bid together that could get us what we were looking for with regard to the true cost of handling claims and what money the city could potentially save. We got quite a number of bids, and in that situation, we saved like $850,000 from the previous year. All the, so that was like a million five or something like that. And that was all because a problem came in the door, so to speak. We had a new HR director. She did a tremendous job, and she brought the problem to me. And we were able to put money in, back into our banks, so to speak, that the commissioner could use on issues that were, they were looking for funding for. I believe you have to constantly be looking for these kinds of things. And you have to constantly be evaluating, are you getting your money's worth in these particular issues?
Thank you.
Sure.
Occasionally, there's, it falls upon us to go to Tallahassee to try to testify or try to say something bad or good about legislation. You feel that your area of responsibility is to, to go to Tallahassee and speak on issues?
If the commissioner, if the commissioner wants me to accompany a particular commissioner or whatever, yes, I've done that before. I've worked on a number of key issues, particularly with regard to grants and also some legislation. I worked on Live Local, and I worked with some of the staff in Tallahassee. And when I did the Live Local ordinance for Deltona, they helped me. And, and because they were the ones who wrote it. And some of them may not have been happy with what the legislature was doing, which is great, because that kind of gives you inside information on what position you may be able to take successfully. And so, that worked really well for us in the past. I wrote the ordinance. They passed it like a year and a half ago, I think, or two years before, just right before I left. And it has not been challenged. Live Local is a real issue for the future for cities and counties in Florida. And I believe that, you know, I don't know if you have a specific ordinance in place on Live Local, but by the same token, I have the one that I wrote. And I'd always be willing to talk with the folks in Tallahassee. And also, with grants, oftentimes going to Tallahassee helps you get a grant, you know, if you can talk to the people that. So, yes, I'm if you can talk to the people that, so yes, I'm comfortable with that and I'd be willing to accompany any of you.
Great.
Thank you. Ms. Chair?
Thank you. District 3 Commissioner Kim Carney.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. My question is, describe your experience working on mediated settlement agreements, including community groups and constituents to resolve matters and avoid litigation.
Again, I have, I'm a fiscal conservative and I have a very common sense way of looking at these kinds of issues. Sometimes, even from the lawyer's standpoint, it's not a matter of right or wrong. Sometimes it's a matter of how much is it going to cost? And depending how important the issue is, which would not be my call, it would be something that I would talk to the board about, it may be a situation in certain circumstances where a settlement is a better option. Because again, litigation has become incredibly expensive today. And the cost of going to litigation, all the discovery and all the motions and everything that you have to do is incredibly expensive. So if you're going to go either one, you're going because there's some key issue that there is a need to fight for, or two, because, I don't think it's only one at this point, because most times, a lot of the litigation that we deal with or can deal with, oftentimes in the bigger picture, may not be worth what it's going to cost us to get there. And I think that's the kind of information that needs to be shared with the board because only the board can really set that and talking with the county manager, those priorities. I'm the lawyer, I can tell you my opinion of what I think it's going to cost and what we can do and not do, but it's not ultimately my decision. It's the board and also with the recommendation from the county manager. Because it may have an impact on the administrative side of the government that I may not be aware of. So that's basically how I look at it.
And second question, could you tell us about a time when you have experienced litigating a controversial issue on behalf of the board? And what was the outcome? And what did you learn from this experience? And what would you do differently?
Well, I think that probably earlier in my career, I did a lot of litigation and I headed a litigation team. It's not something I would prefer to do anymore, but I think you have to be young in certain regards to, you know, have the energy for some of the litigation. Again, because it's been, it's come so convoluted and it's so complicated. I've litigated many things. I would say that mostly the areas that I'm proudest of is the cases I've won in the land use arena. You know, where I've either represented a city and/or a county, both of them, I can't think of the case names at this point, but where they were trying to force the city or the county's hand with regard to a particular development that didn't fit and didn't meet the standards that were required. And I, in both those cases, I had a board that wanted us to go. And we did, and we won in both those cases. It's not, it's not easy, it's not easy to win this kind of litigation. And again, it kind of goes back to what I said before, you also have to look at how important is the issue and how much money are you willing to spend? And sometimes it may look important, but when you look at the potential costs that would be involved, you may want to spend the money somewhere else. It's basically, what's the effect of it? How big of an impact does it have on the county? If the impact is so significant and challenges or has a big issue on importance, an important issue in the county, then probably you want to litigate. But a lot of the stuff is like, yeah, I don't like it or whatever, but we can live with it. And do we want to spend $250,000 to say we fought it? Or do we want to say, yeah, we can live with it, we'll spend the $250,000 somewhere else? And so that's kind of my approach with regard to that. You're welcome.
Our District 4 Commissioner, Commissioner Pennington.
Yes. Describe your experience drafting development agreements and our local agreements and working on comp plans and environmental issues.
Okay. I've done all of them. I've worked on all of it. So, it, comprehensive plans are great. It's just that almost as soon as you get it done, it's irrelevant because something else has happened that you didn't plan for. So it's always a continuing process. And, and most of those kinds of agreements, I'm a real fan of goal-setting and visioning and those kinds of things because they're more real and they're more, and it's also easier, I think, for your constituents to understand visioning. Because you can show them pictures and show the process and how you go through visioning. And I've had many, I've been in many workshops on visioning. And I, for me, when we have them, we seem to have the residents more involved and more activated in seeing the possibilities than in any other way. So I'm a real fan of those kinds of workshops. Because the hardest part is for everybody who doesn't work for government or isn't in government to understand government and to understand what possibilities might be out there for them. So I like the workshop approach and I really like visioning, but I've done all of those.
And my last question, describe your experience working on state-like legal issues related to counties such as preemption, home rule, and taxation.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I've worked on all of those too. Those are tough ones. They're always tough. And again, it's one of those kinds of things, staying in touch with what's going on in Tallahassee, determining what the association, the counties in Florida can help you with, what are they doing? Are there some major issues where we can tangle, tag along with others that want to get in? So we share costs, which is always a good thing. I mean, so again, it kind of comes down to your priority lists. But yes, I've done all of those things also.
Our District 5 Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson.
I think I said last but not least, right? Question, my first question is, describe your experience litigating jury trials, bench trials, and DOAH proceedings.
I, was that?
That's it?
Okay. Well, that's a lot. Anyway, I have not done any jury trials in government. You know, I've dealt with a lot of hearings, a lot of public records issues that have gone to court, you know, those kinds of things. I dealt with in the land use area is where you see, you know, basically, depending on the kind of development and how hard the developer is willing to fight, that can take you to appeals, trying to get a good decision from the court, then appealing if you don't and ultimately can go to the Supreme Court. Again, very long process, very expensive. I've dealt with that in land use. But the other facets of county government, most of those do not go to any kind of, they're usually a more temporary, like a hearing to try and resolve it. And, you know, you get a decision and you either appeal it or you don't. So, it's not that the process is so long, it's how many you could end up with.
Thank you. Okay, my next question. Have you created special assessments for a local government? Explain the challenges you encountered working with local government and how you dealt with the constituency affected by the proposed special assessments.
Yes, I have worked on special assessments. I've worked on them in a number of ways and some weird kind of twist to them. We tried to, we had, we put legislation in place that, to allow people to, you know, that had code enforcement fines, to allow a path for them to settle them and giving them an opportunity to pay over time. So we were trying to, again, clear some of the stuff that you, that you don't have to care and feed if you can resolve it. And we were very successful with that. And there is a state process that allows the counties to do it and the cities. And code enforcement fines cause probably more problems for people with their, their real estate tied up or, you know, they, it's hard for them to dispose of it or they don't have the money, but they don't know what to do. And so we came up, wasn't we, we used a process from the state that had come out that we then passed an ordinance and adopted. I think anything you can do to, come up with a way that people can stay in their homes is a really positive thing, you know? And again, it's like, these are the people that we're working for. And if we can do some things that might make their life a little easier or give them some kind of path, rather than just waiting for, you know, doomsday, so to speak, when they haven't paid and they haven't paid or whatever, then are we going to foreclose? I mean, all of those kinds of things. So, I have always looked for paths that I could offer to administration, to the board of ways to try and resolve some of these problems. Because as I started out with, we've got bigger problems than that. So we need to try and resolve some of the smaller stuff, that we can come up with a path and let people get rid of that. It's not on their lien, it's not a lien on them. It doesn't, they can pay it off and then there's no problem with their property if they want to sell it or whatever they want to do. And there's always, I think for a lot of people, it allows them some peace of mind because they can, there's a path for them to remove that from hanging over their heads. And I think that's important. And I believe that government is very important to a lot of people's lives. I think that some of the negative is because a lot of people don't understand it. And I understand that you have an academy, a citizens' academy, and I've been involved in those in the past. And I think that, you know, we need a TV show, Citizens Academy, that we can show, you know, so people can tune in with subject matter. Because I think that if people understand what it all means and explain in a way they can understand it, it takes a lot of the anxiety away. And so, you know, I guess I'm always looking for those kinds of things. But by the same token, when my job is to fight, I fight and I'm very hard-nosed.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. That's all of the prepared statements. I've got just one follow-up, just to talk a little bit about your experience with, with public interaction. So at the times where you deal with the public and interact with them, talk a little bit, if you have a philosophy, about how you deal with negativity in the public? Because that's common now.
Yes.
More so than in the past with social media. But your philosophy on public participation, even in the government process?
I, you know, I mean, I think that every person has a right to speak and to speak to their elected representatives. It is, can be challenging at times. You know, I said as the county attorney, I have no right to speak to any of those people unless the commission says, "Attorney, would you please respond to them?" When that happens, I go out in the audience and ask them if they would meet me outside. And I talk to them. And I've done very well once I can get a civil conversation going and, and understand what their issues are and how can I fix them. And I've done, I've done a number of those where I, people that were coming in and fighting and saying horrible things about all of us, basically became very supportive of the board and even of me. Because that, once they understand it, once they can understand how we can fix their problem and what we can't do to fix their problem, or is there another path, I think people are very receptive. I think it's a problem of not understanding. We use acronyms, we use, you know, things that people don't know what they stand for. And so they hear a lot that they don't even understand. And then, then yes, so they say terrible things about you or me or whatever, and then our feelings are hurt, but you have to go back to, why is that happening? And a lot of times, our government lingo is not understood by the public. And so that's why I think the Citizens Academy is a great idea. I think it all needs to go further. We may need to post online, you know, I think one time I posted a list on land use, some of the words that are in the comprehensive plan and what did they mean, what do they mean? You know, so people can educate themselves if that's what they want to do, so they better understand when they come to your meetings, what they're hearing and what's happening. So I think we have, we have to do that. And while I have at times just been overwhelmed by the negativity at times where you just want to run out of the room and say, "I just can't do this anymore," part of me taking a break allowed me to have a different opinion in looking at some of the things that I have done in the past and how I would do it differently. And thinking about the times where when I did approach and asked to meet, that they were very successful outcomes. So part of that was giving me an opportunity for reflection on some of that. When you've been in a career for a long time and you're just churning, it's always good to have that moment. And, and of course, today was a moment for me. I had to see what it was. Did I want to do this? Was I ready to go back and do it? And how did I feel about meeting all of you and understanding Flagler County? And so, I feel very good about, like, from my personal opinion of what I could do and what I can't do and how I feel about it. I feel like I passed my personal test, which is part of why you were the only government that I applied to.
Thank you. Did he have a, no? Okay. We want to sincerely thank you again for your time today, for this open question session. We are going to go to public comment. So some of the attendees that are out there can, we'll give them a little bit of opportunity for public comment. We'll adjourn this part of the workshop for the meet and greet in the back. And what time do we want to reconvene? What's, what's the pleasure of the board? Quarter after or six or 6:30?
Well, do we, do we want to do public comment now?
I'm going to do public comment.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. All right, so let's see what time it is after public comment. Okay. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment. So if there's anybody from the public that has some comments on our two candidates.
Jane Jen Seal Ude.
Come speak up closer. You got to get.
Sorry.
Sorry, the chair, you can move the chair.
That's all right.
Or sit, have a seat.
Make myself comfortable. I did have a very lovely conversation yesterday with Michael. And I actually emailed him my highly a city council, I ran, we knew the same people. And my first choice, and I told him right away, I said, "I'm very upset. Jim Manfree has been my favorite, as you all know. He has not actually served as a county attorney for five years, but he's a resident of Flagler County, which no other applicant is, for well over 25 years. He has been a constitutional officer, a sheriff twice. He's been in private practice. Now, if living in a county and knowing all the lawsuits that we have pending, and I think most of them, Mr. Rodriguez could settle in a week, that are still going on, Jim Manfree, to me, is the only person who really can jump in and get everything done. And he's willing to work for $150,000 a year, which saves us over half a million in three years to pay lifeguards." What I did, what I did admire about Mr. Rodriguez, and he won, he came in second on Jeopardy, so he's got to be pretty smart. He lived in and survived South Florida, that's a big plus. He's never lived in Flagler County. He hasn't mentioned that he would move to Flagler County. And when I spoke with him, there were a few things that did concern me. One was, why he's earning $153,000? Why is he asking $195,000? When we have Jim Manfree, I told him, who's willing to work for $150,000? And right now, he's getting $153,000 in Palm Bay. Why did he want a $42,000 increase? For a county who's only responsible for 30,000 people, because you have no jurisdiction outside the county. I asked him, would he be willing to negotiate his salary down? If he would be willing to negotiate his salary down, I think, even though his resume looks like a trampoline, I don't like the fact that he wants to further his career. But he is young, he's done jury trial, and out of the two candidates, he's got the get-up and go. I would like him to come down in salary and agree to move to Flagler County with his family or reconsider your final meeting because we really don't desperately need an attorney. All of our lawsuits- All of our lawsuits are in outside hands. So could we postpone the special meeting? It's not urgent, and maybe reconsider one more attorney. But I would give Michael Rodriguez kudos. The other, I want three minutes on Marsha, because I, I went on.
I'll give you a little bit of time, but I'm not going to give you three minutes.
Okay, no. Marsha, on Marsha's resume, first of all, I don't want to be one to speak about age, but I think, I think it's going to be a little difficult. Marsha lives in Deltona. On her resume, she gives a post office address. She doesn't give her real address anywhere. I don't like that. She gave her wrong address for her place of employment. She gave Seneca Boulevard. I called Deltona, their address is on Providence Boulevard. Her resume says she was county attorney, city attorney for like, from 2008 to 2024. She was assistant attorney and attorney for only one year. So her resume conflicts with her application. She also said she made $30,000 a month. Now, Mr. Rodriguez's application is A1 perfect, as far as everything he put. But again, I would like you to postpone the special meeting, because I think someone like Jim Manfree, who's lived here for 30 years and knows more about Dade County than anybody in the county attorney's office, should be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next public speaker, please. Everybody's going to use the chair tonight.
Yeah, it's too, it's hard to stand.
We might have to leave it there.
I like it. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity. I, I think that you have.
Beating for the record, Perry.
Well, Perry Motrano, 207 London Drive, Palm Coast. Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you guys work so hard to try to replace, an irreplaceable. I mean, this man has been here for so long and knows so much, and it's a thank you also over there. But you do have tough choices, and you've got experience on both levels, some more than the other. I can't necessarily agree with some of the findings of the previous speaker. I definitely don't want you to, my opinion as a resident, I, please do not, do not stop the process. Make a decision, move forward, work with it. Hopefully, it'll work the way it's supposed to. And if for some reason it doesn't, you could always make a change. So don't, don't stop the process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public speakers? Seeing none, at least let me recognize Mr. Mike Boyd, our planning and development board chair for this year. Thank you for being here, sir. Okay, seeing none, the pleasure of the board. Do we, are we okay going with the meet and greet? We, we don't have a ton of people here. We could go directly to the special meeting, so.
We could give them 10 minutes or so.
Okay, so let's go to 6:15?
Yep.
Okay. And we'll reconvene at 6:15. I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.